New business.
Well, you need to, actually, Mr. Nelson's here already, so if nobody else is joining you...
Sorry, I didn't even see you sitting there. Yes, go on up to the front.
Where would you have me?
Okay, we'll open this. Move by. Counselor Pudle. Seconded by Counselor Parrot. Be resolved that Council of the Town of Niqwa do not open this public hearing to your recommendation to an amendment to the Town of Niqwa zoning by law 3184-18. All in favor? Parrot.
Good evening, thank you. So, first, right? Pardon me? Shall we read the bylaw first?
Sure.
So, yes, this is a letter map amendment to the Town of Niqwa zoning map, attached to and being part of the Town of Niqwa zoning by law 3184-18. As amended, is hereby further amended to, in order that landers subscribe as follows: Parcel 1, Plan 5695, for Land Title's office. Parcel 3, Plan 5847, NPO. And Parcel A, Plan 5428, NPO, located in the part of southeast 321415W in the Town of Niqwa, as shown outlined in the heavy solid line on the map attached here to and marked as Schedule A, and a part of the amended by law 3215-22. Be rezoned from its current ML industrial light zone to the proposed RM2 residential unit 2 zone. Same thing, as it's a bylaw amendment circulated through provincial departments, and of all departments circulated, there was no objections. Madam municipal relations, just a comment that this map amendment proposes to rezone the lands referenced above from ML industrial light zone to RM2 residential multi-unit 2 zone to allow for the development of multi-unit residential buildings in the subject lands. Brand Community Planning Office has no concerns with the proposed amendment, and there was no other, whatever comments from provincial circulation. Same with bylaws, it's affecting individual property, it was circulated to property owners within 100 meters, and also at two times posted in the little paper. And a couple phone calls and questions, but no concern lodged in the direction board from the office.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Warren is...
Yes, it is.
Does he have any comments?
Just gather my thoughts.
Okay.
I actually remember it's so short. Thanks very much for processing this as quickly as it has been. We were rather surprised coming out of Winnipeg, this process would take us eight months, so we can't thank you enough, and it sure helps.
That's fine, great administration.
Yeah, your team moves it along, and we respect and appreciate that. A couple of small details, and then the big picture. It is our intent to do a consolidation of the three properties we're talking about. The bylaw currently describes three separate legal titles, but for financing and simplification reasons, we have started, the Detjuk and Isaac land surveyors, on the process of preparing a consolidation into one bigger discussion for us. It's just neater and cleaner. The issues we're examining right now with regards to the property are how we're going to service it. There are some qualities of property that we need to address, one of which is the fact that, as your administration has pointed out to us previously, the existing trailer court does require some additional fire protection in the form of hydrants, so we're working on that, and we have a mechanical engineer doing some preparatory work for us. We're awaiting a market study and appraisal. We've hired Cushion Wakefield, CMHC's preferred appraiser, and they're looking at your community for us as we speak, and we expect that in two or three weeks' time, they're going to give us their opinion as to what the, we affectionately refer to as the absorption is. What is the demand for this product? And we don't want to exceed our grasp, but we do want to build to demand. So, I'm sure we all have opinions as to demand in Niqwa. We're confident it's significant, but the financial process we have to go through requires us to show them that we've done our diligence. So, we have reputable licensed appraisers preparing that for us now, and as I said, I hope to have it within two weeks. I'd be pleased to share it with you, so that you know how that process looks at Niqwa. We believe there's a demand for affordable housing in Niqwa. CMHC currently has an affordable housing program, which we're comfortable working with, and we're quite fond of it, actually. It provides a lot of advantages to developers. It does come with some prescriptions. If we proceed under the current program to develop affordable rental housing on the site, 10% of the units would need to be accessible, and by accessible, that's wheelchair accessible. That's not to the building code either, that's to CSA standards, so it's the highest level of accessibility. CMHC gives us points, it's your good boy's point system. We get a fair number of points for energy efficiency, so the project would need to be to a level somewhat higher than the Manitoba Energy Code, which interestingly enough is somewhere higher than CMHC's own code. So, the project would need to be energy efficient and affordable. We need to provide, we get points for various quantums of what we contribute. This is all on the CMHC webpage, if you want to take a look at what we're trying to, what we're designing. But affordability will require us to provide a minimum of 10 and perhaps as many as 30% of the units at 20 to 30% below CMHC's opinion as to what market rent is in Niqwa. So, and that's provable, and we have to support it by audit annually, so it isn't a sham. We can't get around it. We lose our financing if we don't provide a significant affordable component within the overall structure of the project. We have an architectural firm who have prepared preliminary designs for us of a single 24-unit project, stretching that to 30, to 36, to 48, and we're considering in lieu of 48 to 24s. The National Building Code has fire ratings and prescriptions that the 48-unit building draw in. Jeff would appreciate all of this. We're also looking very seriously at non-combustible construction. We've all read the papers about buildings burning down under construction and what's built. We're not comfortable a three-story multifamily wood-frayed building, so we're making every effort and we're looking at every alternative to design and build a non-combustible solution. In any case, the building will be spray-ridged. That's just common sense today. We, you're moving faster than we are, and I opened the meeting by thanking you for that. We didn't, I didn't expect Jeff's note recently that we were here for first reading. We hope that in the month of May, we will have a design presentation for you as to what the building will look like, what the final suite cap will be, what the appraisal says, what the markets then says, and I'd be happy to come back and share all of that with you. I read the province's correspondence. We have the ability to move to second and/or third reading at this point. We, of course, want to cross as many bridges as we can as soon as we can, and I was going to suggest to this council, if there is no opposition, we're proceeding in full faith. If we could receive first and second reading tonight, and you could hold third reading to the resolution of the development agreement or whatever relationship understanding we need to resolve, we're happy to do that. Second reading helps us go to CMHC and indicate to them that we're moving along. First reading, I might go to the back of the queue at CMHC's appraisal process, and I'm anxious to, we see an opportunity to be in the ground this fall with occupancies June-July of next year. We're in conversations with Blockstall Construction, a reputable Manitoba board and raised company as our construction manager, and we've told Blockstall that they will be required to canvas your community and obtain as many local quotes for material, labor, and supply that they can, and we will hold them to that. I commit to you that I'll be beyond disappointed if anyone in your community can come to you and say that we weren't given an opportunity to contribute to this project. We appreciate working with the community, and you have my word, that we will, not no issue.
Yes, I'm glad to hear that you're doing a bit of a market study on that. I think if you know around the area, surrounding trading area, there's definitely affordable housing.
You're an interesting model for financing. The community is, and this project would be dependent upon the processing plant's employees, and of course, a lender will always say, and they have said, "What if the plant closes?" And we say, "Well, if the plant's going to close, why are they continuously financing significant expansions to the plant? Why are water increased sewage lagoons? Why are all of those projects, you know, under consideration, under review if that plant is going to close?" And as well, whether or not the plant is a good partner with Niqwa, I think you would be hard-pressed to replace that plant. You know, they've worked hard to get to where they are, and the product and demand is substantial and provable. So, we're not concerned, but we have to, we have some appraisal and market study hurdles, not hurdles, check marks we need to achieve. To answer a question that may have been asked, what about our first application to you and the primary development, the 144-unit modular home park? We continue to proceed in that. We've now hired our civil engineering firm, and they'll be in touch with your team shortly to get that process started. We have received, thank you, and reviewed the development agreement. We took a little bit of time to cost a few of the items within the agreement, just to confirm that we remain within our, I have an Excel spreadsheet, change a number, and it trickles down to the lower right corner, and we just had to plug in some costs that the development agreement brought to our attention. I don't think we have any issues with it, but we owe it to our group and to our lender to do that, and we've done that now. We had hoped that we would be in the ground this summer. We don't know if that's achievable, and I'll forewarn you, if the demand for affordable rental apartments is what some people tell us it will be in your community, we may be back here looking at that 144-unit modular park and asking if you would consider allowing us to build some multifamily within that. So, we would have rezoned it to multifamily, and we may be back here and happy to have the discussion with your administration, but we may be back asking you to allow us to build some multifamily. We have started to market the, there's a strip of commercial property in the new development along the Gile North-South arm, and we prepared some preliminary drawings for some built-to-suit and lease-back contractor office shop space in that currently zoned light industrial. So, that's everything I know about our working relationship. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
The lots that you said that you were going to consolidate, those are lots 3, 1, and A?
I believe so, yes.
That's those three?
Yes.
Okay.
We do it, we would expect that your administration wouldn't issue a building permit that straddled legal descriptions, and lenders don't like to lend against straddled legal descriptions. So, I think anticipating that toothache for all of us, we're just going to get it started now and get it pulled together if we want. It's a simple consolidation, there's nothing onerous or nefarious about it. We just want one project, one title, one permit, one tax bill. Simple, yeah. That's a thought anyway, could change tomorrow. Any questions?
I keep going on that side.
We're going on it, yeah.
No, it seems the council is good, so.
For your information, we're, the Crescent Creek Group, Daryl Cedric, who I think you've met, are encouraging me to get this moving, and I can tell you that I have no financial impediments or restrictions or limits. They like the project, they want to get in to the ground, and in fact, I'm, you know, I walk in to hear that someone else is talking about multifamily in the community as well. We know we're not the smartest of the best, but we'd like to be the first, and so we're moving on that.
Yeah, that's great. Just keep working with their town staff.
Yeah, they've been terrific. Jeff and I have a healthy professional relationship. I share the information that I can with him, and we, I can't tell you, I would rather drive the two hours each way to this meeting than have to attempt to do this within the city of Winnipeg. Your, you know, your administration is great, we appreciate it.
So, just for clarity, we did your first reading on April 5th to this, that actually put it into the circulation process with the province?
Right.
The second step in that would be this public hearing tonight. Here on the agenda is second reading, and of course, based on section 150 of the Act, then we're requiring that we will complete the development for the reading, so very similar to the...
Yeah, the other path we're on.
So, just so you know, we're one reading ahead of what you were thinking.
You guys! I should have come yesterday. Yeah, but if you could give a second reading, which I appreciate it, and before I leave, if there's any questions, concerns, thoughts, we try and be as transparent as we can. We have some, we own a building in Minneville Center, and we're underwater there, so...
Very concerned.
Yeah, no, and people living in strange places tonight.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming up.
Yeah, please do sit down again. My phone number, it's Warren Mills, and my phone number is 204-797-1042. If any of the councillors or the administration have a question, comment, concern, call me. If it goes to voicemail, I will respond promptly, and the more information we can exchange, the healthier the relationship is.
All right, thank you.
And I'm not a morning person, I know. You guys are over baked today, it's 6:00 a.m., I'm not. Anything else? All right, fill me up.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, so, what's your next public meeting? Move by. Counselor Lado, seconded. Counselor Costin Chuck. Be resolved that the council of the Town of Niqwa do not adjourn this public meeting at 7:55. All in favor?
It's windy in here.
Okay, so, then we are to new business. How many?
So, the first one is a request from the Filipino Heritage Committee regarding the Filipino Heritage Month celebration. So, for people, clearly, they one day will have their celebration. The first one they had a few years ago, was quite successful at Lion's River Bed Park. I believe they fed like 800 people or so. So, they're going to try and host this again on June 18th. So, the idea of Filipino Heritage Celebration will take place June 18th at the Lion's River Bed Park. The theme for this year will be local heritage, seeds of Filipino culture, and they're looking to help with some funding for their event, mostly because they're planning to host 2,000 people all fed free of charge, which the donations would be greatly appreciated to do this. They're reaching out, they figured that in the Philippines, there's actually different communities within their own country over there, that there's nine countries, or different representations for their country that they're reaching out, from even areas, you know, up to Russell and wherever else they might be in Manitoba to come to Niqwa. So, they're looking for assistance from whoever they can, and reached out to the Town of Niqwa and writing to us for that. They want us to consider making donations, sponsoring the event, and by giving them to the event, they'll be able to accomplish the goals and assist members of their community to materialize the celebration. An appreciation in your anticipated donation, they think the efforts would go even farther if we were an official sponsor of some sort, and they're looking for gifts in kind, or monetary donations and whatnot, to make the event a success. So, they have applied for a parks permit. We will, like we would with other celebrations this mag, to assist them, you know, with making sure they have picnic tables and the space available and the garbage and all those things, but they want us to consider a financial commitment to this event.
So, we have a resolution?
Discussion, or...
Discussion.
We have previously provided a group with a cash input to help them get their entity started on the basis that it would be an amount that they replaced every year, so that this is a one-time event, so that moving forward, they would always have their initial amount of money to get their project going. This is under the same rules. I work that, correct?
Yeah, the idea to move forward, maybe I should add, when they came forward with the request, we worked through our economic department officer, we had them open a bank account, legitimize their organization, get signed for it, to make sure that, you know, everything was, the monies were satisfied correctly, the checks and the payments would come up correctly, so that nobody who's pointing any fingers was saying it wasn't legitimate. So, they've done all that, and they're prepared to roll any monies forward that they, you know, have at the end of the season to hopefully, you know, give effect to the starter book in next year's event, making it a bigger event, so. So, there is a recommendation on your resolution of administration, about $2,000 commitment to this particular celebration. If you choose to alter that, that will be your decision.
Okay, any comments?
I know we've supported other groups even before, whether it would have been things like Lilly Fest, different kind of projects like that, and again, for it to draw upwards of 2,000 people within our community, I think that's phenomenal, and this acting is seed money, and it's something that should be replenished going forward. I think it's just about creating another activity within our community and celebrating, I guess, the cultures that are within our community, which I think is just fantastic, so.
Excellent, yeah, here we go. Anyone else? Okay, so, if we can look at motion here for, in the amount of $2,000, move by. Counselor Gar, seconded by Counselor Huddel. Be resolved that we approve the funding in the amount of $2,000 to assist in the associated costs of hosting the celebration of Filipino Heritage Month in Niqwa and area on June 18th, 2022. All in favor? Period. Okay, Colleen, sale of property?
So, this is a piece of property the town owns at 390 Allen Street. This is one of the six lots that are directly on Allen that run east and west, and this would be, if you still agree to sell it, the purchase of the third lot, no, the fourth lot, I guess now, of the six that remain there. It is just a straight offer for a single residential home, $45,000, as the previous lots were sold for and the remaining lots are available for sale. It would be subject, of course, to all of our bylaw requirements, just to be clear, whether it be drainage requirements or retaining walls or whatever, the bylaws are oriented to address all of those.
Okay, any questions? Counselor Gar?
Is there any timeframe in terms of when the development has to occur, like we've seen other projects, where there's a two-year window or...
There's one, because it was that new development, the terms of the original sale of those lots was a two-year time period.
Okay, anyone else? All right, need a motion, move by. Counselor Costin Chuck, seconded by Counselor Parrot. Be it resolved that we approve the sale of Lot 2, Plan 62361, in the southeast 331415 West, in the amount of $45,000 to Bebenrich Limited. All in favor? Period. Okay, Colleen, please do.
So, this Lagoon project has been ongoing for several years now. We're actually going to proceed back into the tender stage to get Phase 2 out of the gate and back on the slate, and more, for like in the fastes, agreed to do the management of our project for us. So, the technical resource, capability that we provide is invaluable, especially since they did Phase 1 for us. So, they would like a resolution of council requesting that they do provide that assistance so we can move forward and get the tenants out and start moving forward with Lagoon Phase 2.
Okay, comments? It's about time. All right, so, need a motion, move by. Counselor Parrot, seconded by Counselor Costin Chuck. Be resolved that the council of the Town of Niqwa requests the assistance of Manitoba Services Water Services Board to provide project management services for Phase 2 of the wastewater treatment system upgrade and expansion project. All in favor? Period. Okay, Colleen, Newsopps, Birds, and Burman.
So, this is just an annual housekeeping resolution. The only change that might occur on it is perhaps the names we put on it, so we're authorizing the discharge of firearms. And Niqwa, the purpose of getting rid of crows and pigeons and vermin and beavers and gophers and that kind of thing that are public use as an agent. It'd be Chad Campbell and Jake Birch in conjunction with our local RCP detachment.
Questions?
I guess I would just comment that it's very clear that there are only two, since we are approved to discharge. citizens who are approved to discharge firearms within our community. These were the control of... And all the two.
Okay, motion, move by. Councillor Lado, seconded by Councillor Fudlow. Whereas certain species of birds, such as crows, pigeons, and burmans, such as beaver, gophers, pose a public nuisance and danger to the public, and whereas council deems it necessary to shoot at... Shoot such that poses... To shoot such that poses a nuisance and health risk, therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Ni'wau authorize Chad Campbell and Jake Birch through direction and consultation with the local police detachment and CAO to discharge firearms for this purpose within town limits during the 2022 year. All in favor?
These are Dallasville.
That's okay. I stumbled, but I was also thinking that it's a good thing we have that because last weekend I watched a number of people chasing around beaver and down our street, so. All right. So it sounds like our manager of operations thinks there's going to be grass law this year.
I'm just gonna read it myself if there's any of your conflict.
Okay, yeah, don't worry. Okay, Councillor Gerard, for conflict. And who's speaking to this, Deneer?
I can speak to this, yeah. So this is... Unfortunately, we can only find one eligible bid on this one, and that'd be Enbrothers because of the style of mower we're choosing for this one. So it stands as riding lawnmower, and John here is one that only makes... The only benefits that we find that stands up to maybe using the alleys that we put on a traditional riding style lawnmower. So that's why it's a single source unit that we expect in this one here.
All right, any comments? Motion, move by. Councillor Eric, seconded, Councillor Lado. Be it resolved that we approve the purchase of a JD X59 long tractor for Men's Brothers for a net trade-in value of $10,284 plus tax. All in favor? Carry. Okay, so now we're down to bylaws. And do we need anything to read through that?
No, just second reading, of course. The follow-up to the public hearing.
Okay, so move by. Councillor Fudlow, seconded by Councillor Costin Chuck. Be it resolved that the bylaw number 3902-22 be in a bylaw of the town of Ni'wau to amend the zoning of lots 6 and 7, Plan 6991, at 553 and 571 Dominion Road from MH Industrial Heavy Zone to the proposed RM2 residential multi-unit zone 2 zone. Be now read a second time. Be further resolved that any matters applicable to the subsequent development of the property and deemed irrelevant by the town of Ni'wau as per Section 150 of the Planning Act be outlined in a development agreement between the property owner and the town of Ni'wau. Such agreement to proceed third reading by law 3209-22 and register it as a cadant. All in favor? Carry. Okay, and the second zoning. Move by. Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Costin Chuck. Be it resolved that by law number 3215-22 be in the bylaw of the town of Ni'wau to amend the zoning of Parcel 1, Plan 5695, Parcel 3, Plan 5847, and Parcel 8, Plan 5428, from industrial light zone to RM2 residential multi-unit 2 zone. Be now read for a second time. Be further resolved that any matters applicable to the subsequent development of the property and deemed relevant by the town of Ni'wau as per Section 150 of the Planning Act be outlined in the development agreement between the property owner and the town of Ni'wau. Such agreement to proceed third reading by law 3215-22 and register it as a cadant. All in favor? Carry. Other business, oh, anything? Anybody else? Councillor Gerard?
Yeah, just want to make a comment. Over the past weekend, we noticed, you know, residents of Ni'wau who are committed to keeping this a beautiful community, busy in the yards, and making good use of our tree and grass and compost site. It's fantastic. It's there. We can see the piles of wood chips and compost that are available for the citizens to use. Very dismayed when I can see construction materials being dumped in by the trees. And we're seeing things like, you know, we're seeing, whether it be boards or nails on them and they're stacking the wood, same thing, or we see drywall that's been dumped in sight where those trees are. I would just suggest that if we can't better use or maintain that ourselves collectively as residents, that we may have to look at posting hours to control that site, or we may have to see if we can't have good material there, whether we even look at maintaining a site within town limits and maybe defaulting that to Evergreen. So I mean, I just ask all citizens, it's a phenomenal resource and a benefit that we have as a community, but it only works and functions well if we treat it with the respect it deserves.
Yeah, very good comment. And now Evergreen is a great facility. It's not that far away to be able to... They're open, you know, lot hours and that, so yes, please. Please, a very good suggestion. Thanks.
Preston? Deneer, can I get you to speak on the garbage bins, etc., at the town maintenance chest?
Yeah, we... Been a rough spring for the illegal dumping. We have local residents, we have outside residents, we have a lot of people dumping garbage there. It's unfortunate, and it's the same case that the dumpsters we have there are for town use, and that doesn't mean every Joe on the street. That means for our staff to go pick up the waste refuse around town, literally pick up the litter that ignorant people are throwing around. But also the few approved residents that have opted not to have cart pickup because they're either on the outskirts and it's quite difficult, they just opted and requested that they can drop off their refuse on our facility. Those people are approved. It's every other single person in this community that's taking endless bags there. That's not doable, and it's the same thing. The dumpster will likely have to go behind a fence compound, a log compound, or we're simply going to start literally sending fines and adding to your taxes. We know who you are. Our cameras show your faces. They show your vehicles. They show your license plates. They show everything you're dropping off there. They're easy to go. It's against our bylaws, so we do not want you there. Evergreen is a very short ride. I know you're dumping this during working hours, so it's only a few more hours to the dump. It's a free drop-off at Evergreen. Just drive out there. It's a simple process. There's nothing to be scared of over there. I haven't seen, perhaps never have been driving there myself in the weekend. It's easy. Yeah, it's, like I said, it's disgusting. There's everything being dumped there right now.
All right, thanks, Deneer. Yes. Yep, at the end of the day, we're trying to keep this community beautiful, and so we need everybody to work at that.
The other one is that we do not run a licensed transfer facility. And people are treating this as a transfer facility, and that would require us to get permits through the province to do that. It's a collection point for our own staff to utilize, be picked up from. But when residents keep frauding and dropping off, that now defines itself as a transfer station. So that's a bigger cost to taxpayers.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments before the votes? If not, I'd ask for adjournment. Councillor Fudlow, seconded, Councillor Costin Chuck. Be it resolved that the council of the town of Ni'wau do adjourn this regular meeting of council at 8:14 p.m. All in favor? Carry.